This was the second training in order to recertify the entire department. On April 26th, the Fire Department assisted the Point Pleasant Fire District and the Boone County Sheriff's Department with the St. Henry High School Arrive Alive Program. This program is held every two years and displays wrecked vehicles with fake blood and uses some the juniors and the seniors at the school. This event sends a powerful message about not getting behind the wheel of a car intoxicated. Coming up in May, on the 6th, there will be the Promotional Assessment Center. And then on the 9th, we will have the promotional interviews. Chiefs in the House, any other things to add?
All right, thank you. Next, we've got Public Works, Mr. Cahill, Mr. Skidmore.
Yes, May the 21st through May the 27th is National Public Works Week. And I also wanted to mention that the Erlanger Road and Dixie Pedestrian Project is underway. And the Nelson Sidewalk Project, all the concrete's been done, they're just doing the landscaping now. So that's all I have.
So you have four things to discuss tonight from the committee meeting. One of them that we added was the Operation Honor Banner. We do have recommendations for that from the committee. So one of those recommendations is not to use Operation Honor, but actually to turn this over to the Historical Society to make those decisions on people that should be honored with those banners. We'd like to limit the area of the display and the times of the display. We have several areas in Erlanger we think would be very appropriate, Crescent and also the Avenue of Champions for Lloyd High School. We'd like to look at this, and Public Works says we could probably print these locally. We could do a small up-charge and those fees could actually go back to the Historical Society. So that's one of our recommendations for that. Mayor?
Okay.
Any questions about that? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna reach out to the Historical Society and make sure that they have the ability to do these things. But I think this is, this is a good compromise, kind of keeps us out of it and also fits into their mission.
Great.
We did talk about perimeter sidewalk discussion at the committee meeting. At that time, Mr. Vioxx did get a bid for that. We saw an increased cost with those sidewalks. And also with what we're looking at with the sidewalks on taking those on, the responsibility and maintenance of those. This time, the committee recommends that we do not proceed with the sidewalks with the road maintenance. Questions about that? Additional trash cans were talked about on Turkeyfoot Road, Stevenson Road. At this point, we're getting cost estimates on the cost of the trash cans installation and also what we would take to maintain those and our normal rounding with those. And we'll get back to the council with those recommendations. Fens Program, we actually do have an official recommendation. So the city, right now, the committee's recommendation is not to participate in the Fens Program. We've put a lot of work into that park. We prevented the turnover, we've added the air raiders in there. The fish that are in there are great for the catch and release. Our concern is that with the increase in traffic, will be an increase in trash. This is not a catch and release, so you're also gonna see an increase in probably fish remains also there and wearing of pathways around there. Now, we offset that with us being able to go in there and clean up and do those things. And it's kind of an in-kind for putting those fish in there. At this point, we feel that that would not be a good resource for the city or the community around there.
All right.
Questions? Mr. Bogart, anything else?
All right, thank you. All right, then, next up is Administration. Mrs. Skidmore, Mrs. Cahill?
Our committee report was the 4th of July holiday. City Council is on 4th of July, so we are going to do an alternate date. And it will be July the 11th was chosen.
Kathy, do you have a mic? Do you have a mic?
July the 11th was chosen as the special council meeting at 7:00 in the Erlanger Council Chambers due to the July 4th being a holiday. So we'd like to make a motion to change that.
All right.
Okay.
Are we calling that a special meeting?
A special, special council meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
Mayor, could I comment on that?
Sure.
You have an ordinance that establishes when the council meetings are going to be conducted. And there's, it reads that they will be conducted on the second Tuesday of month unless that day is a holiday. And in that event, it's to be, the meeting is to be conducted on the third Tuesday of the month. So I think it's done by ordinance.
So we don't need to do any kind of special meeting?
Please?
We don't have to do a special meeting, it's automatic. We still have the same notice that we put out.
You want, you want to do a special meeting on the second Tuesday?
No, no, no.
Well, if you're gonna do a regular meeting, it has to be on the third Tuesday. If you want to meet on the second Tuesday, it has to be a special meeting.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I see.
So it would not require a special meeting? The ordinance says that it would automatically go to the 11th?
No, to the 18th.
To the 18th.
The 18th.
Oh, the 18th.
Are you sure it's the third?
No, wait a second.
Are you sure it's the third?
Please?
Are you sure it's the third? I thought it was the second.
It was.
We meet on the first Tuesday.
11th is the second Tuesday, the 18th is the third Tuesday. So this is for the 11th.
The third one's committee, the third one's committee meeting. I thought it was the second.
No, ma'am.
Because we meet on the first.
The ordinance says it's the third Tuesday of the month.
Okay, so it'll be the 18th.
Now, you can have a, that would be a regular meeting, and you don't have to do any advertising or anything. But if you want to have the meeting on the second Tuesday, you need to do it as a special meeting with all of the appropriate notices. It's six of one, half a dozen of the other, it's just which one you want to do. If you want to meet on the second Tuesday, you can meet on the second Tuesday, but it has to be a special meeting. If you want to meet on the third Tuesday, you can do it on the third Tuesday without doing anything.
But we're already meeting the third Tuesday. We're already meeting.
11th is fine with me, I don't care.
Either one's fine with me.
So the question is, what day do you want to meet on?
Yeah.
Third, second Tuesday or third Tuesday?
Be the third. If we have legislation in place for the third Tuesday, that's what it should be. Why should we spend extra money to do it on the second one? And then we'll only have one meeting that month. We won't have any Tuesdays left for a committee meeting.
Woo-hoo!
I don't know.
We already have a meeting.
I'll second that motion.
We already have a meeting on the third Tuesday. So we would be eliminating a meeting if we don't do the special meeting.
Yeah.
Is that necessary? Is that?
Is that what council wants?
You know what? We should do the second Tuesday because I remember in the committee meeting, they were saying something about the Nyer. Yeah, the Nyer, we needed to meet soon.
Yeah, they might or might not. I mean, we could play it by ear. So far, we don't have any requests from Nyer. Immediate requests.
I think it'd be better to do the 11th and...
Yeah, let's be, let's do the second.
Is that the 11th?
Do the second.
The 11th and the 18th.
And then still have a committee.
They need the 11th?
We have one's... There's also a conflict with the second Tuesday because of the code enforcement. That's the night that they meet.
That's the week that they elected the day.
To have their codes enforcement meetings, so.
It's not to say they'll have a hearing.
Not to say they'll have a hearing, we don't have anything scheduled. We do have one scheduled for next Tuesday in here, but we don't know for July yet. But even if it is, if you guys still want to meet, we can move the codes enforcement meeting to one of the other rooms in the building, so. But there are some people that are maybe setting up here that are, have to be at that codes enforcement meeting if in fact we had one.
I don't care.
We just want to stay with the third Tuesday since we don't have to do anything about it then? Is that agreed? It seems like there's conflicts and everything going on with the second. So let's, I don't, whatever you want to do, third Tuesday?
I'm, I'm looking for head nods, and I'm not seeing any.
You want to decide next month?
Third Tuesday makes sense, save the money, the advertisement.
Keep it the third and just keep one, one meeting for the month?
Right. Okay, so third Tuesday? Yes. No.
Third Tuesday, you don't have to do anything.
I see one no. Right. I see one person saying no. Everybody else seems to be nodding yes.
If there's a need for a committee meeting, we could still have that after the council.
Yeah, we could still call for a special meeting if necessary. Why don't we do it that way? Okay.
All right, so we're not gonna do a special council meeting. We're just gonna do it on the third Tuesday when we have our regular committee meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything then?
What date is that? I'm confused.
18. So we don't need to do anything then with that to check?
Right, correct. All right, great. Moving on.
Personnel policy.
05, 05, 15, 03, community order.
No.
You want me to say something about that? Personnel policies?
Please do, thank you.
Okay, all right, all right. So at the last committee meeting, we presented all of the changes to the personnel policies. There is a municipal order, I believe you'll be hearing later on tonight, to adopt those as the changes. We said, I do believe that I sent all of them out again to all the council along with the pay scale and the job descriptions and the number of positions, I believe, that are, that are there. So I believe we should have got all the documentation, but what we're asking for is the approval that municipal are adopting those updated personnel policies. If anybody has any questions about any of those, I'll be glad to answer them. They're good.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Job well done.
Thank you for taking the heat off of me. All right, I need to let you know that the General Government Department will be closed Monday, May 29th, 2017, in observance of Memorial Day. And that our adopted units, several of our adopted soldiers from Bravo Battery will be attending and participating in the Armed Forces Day 5K hosted by the cities of Crescent Springs and Villa Hills. This annual event raises money for the Kenton County Veterans Memorial at Crescent Springs Community Park. The race will begin at 8:30 a.m. on May the 20th. If anyone is interested in participating in the race, please contact the city of Crescent Springs at 859-341-3017. Applications are also found on our Erlanger website.
Renee?
Okay. Total processed passports for the month of April was 93. And the total amount collected this month was $2,325. Collected amount for the fiscal year '17 is $16,900. And this is all profit. This is all profit except, you know, the person that does the passports is a city employee, so it's, it's well worth the effort that goes into that. The museum report, total visitors in the month of April was approximately 78. Total visitors this year was 202. And first recreation, we had Putt-Putt Day last Sunday. And Kristen, I want to put you on the spot. Do you know how many?
75.
75, okay, I would've guessed 100, but he said 75, so that's good. Had both courses going and everybody seemed to have a really good time. And...
Everybody seemed to have a really good time, okay. And the 5th, which is Friday, Rogue One Movie and Characters at the Depot Park, 7:30 to 11:00. Rain date is July the 14th. And Train Day at the Depot Park is the 13th of May. Erlanger Night at Florence Freedom is the 17th. And that is like a fundraiser, I believe, for the Erlanger Elsmere School System, or it's Erlanger Night, so we get a discount a little bit on the tickets. We save $2 with $3 per ticket going to support the Erlanger Elsmere Schools Family Resource and Youth Service Centers. This is opening night for the Freedom and will feature four members of the Reds' 1990 World Series Champions Team. I'm sorry, I don't know what four they are. And you can order tickets online and use the code ERLANGER. And I had a note sent to me that said Erlanger is all caps.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that's all I have.
All right. Mrs. Hoffman's in the House?
Yes.
Nothing to add? Okay. All right, then next, we've got Finance and Business Development, Mr. Blankenship, Mr. Montgomery?
Thank you. We had a finance committee meeting on the 18th of April. During the meeting, Steve Bodie presented changes to the proposed budget for fiscal year 2017 and the amended budget for 2016. There were no changes made to those proposals after the committee meeting. So we have a first reading of the ordinance to approve the amended budget and next year's budgets on tonight's agenda. And also, the completed budget document will be distributed soon. And we also, we conducted interviews, several more interviews for the finance clerk position, and it's our recommendation that we hire Kathy Porter for that position. She was a very impressive interviewer. She has over 20 years of experience in government with the city of Union as a clerk treasurer, and I think she'll do a great job. And one other thing, we would like to have a committee meeting to discuss accounting policies and procedures manual that Mark and, Mark Fields and Steve Bodie have been in the process of developing, is to formalize some of the processes that we've been in, been doing all along. But we'd like to put that on for committee meeting. I would move that that be made a committee meeting, referred for committee meeting, thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. All right, anything else?
I have nothing further.
Okay. And Mr. Bodie is not in the House. So Business Development, Mr. Hahn, you're in the House?
Nothing further.
All right, thank you. Building, excuse me, codes building and zoning, Mr. Burke is not here. Mr. Nicely, anything to report?
Everything's fine.
All right. Mr. Hahn, anything to add?
As I see on the agenda about the Code Enforcement Board, at the meeting, we, at the committee meeting, we did meet to discuss that and to bring folks up to date on what they are. The board has had two meetings thus far. First was, the first meeting was in January, which they decided, they organized themselves, they appointed the chairman, which is Mr. Vioxx. They decided that they would meet on the second Tuesday of each month at 7:00 p.m. They had a meeting, an actual hearing in February, and they will have a meeting next Tuesday as well. It was decided that we would, as done with, when the Board of Adjustment meets, that we would send out an email to keep you all up to date on what's going on, of when the meetings are, and then what the outcome of those meetings are.
That'd be nice.
We'll adopt that practice internally here to get that out to you all.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I forgot, I overlooked Ms. Fetty, I think wants to give a report on the hiring.
Oh, yeah.
Skip that one, I was reading my notes, sorry.
That's okay. Just wanted to follow up with you guys. You had requested that I reach out to Lloyd. I spoke with the athletic director, who is in charge of renting out the gym and all other spaces within the school. He gave me some options. The only date before summer really starts is June 10th, which I think is too close. They said they're gonna be starting some construction that's going to limit our availability. He says if we wait until the fall, the gym will be available August 19th, the 26th, or September 9th. He stated we should be able to fit around 50 businesses, depending on the organization of the tables. We need to potentially look into having liability insurance by having it in that, I'm not exactly sure how that works.
Yeah, that's not a big deal.
Okay.
We do that with all of our events that are out there, so that's an easy rider to get through our insurance code.
Cool. He said that there would be no cost anytime the city wants to use the facilities, they offer them free of cost, free of charge. The only thing that we'd have to pay if, if somebody, if we wanted somebody to set up for us and tear down the tables and all that, and the cleaning up afterwards. But I'll do it, so we don't have to pay anybody, so.
Okay.
So the dates, August 19th, 26th, or September 9th?
I had a comment before we get that far.
I saw Mrs. Sutcamp had a hand up first.
Yes. Why don't we think about having it at the library?
That's what I was gonna...
It's not open till December.
The ladies didn't have the...
It's not open till September.
President, can I?
But we, that's a fantastic idea for 2018.
Yeah.
It just won't be open until, she said, spring. Well, December's construction's finished, and then she said it won't open till spring.
We don't necessarily use the new facility, but I mean, to incorporate with the library, I think that would be a phenomenal idea.
Okay. So...
They had the, were they...
Career development.
Exactly. I mean, it could go hand in hand. I mean, I think that would be awesome.
I agree.
You mean to wait till it's open over there?
No, I mean, they've got, they've got rooms there.
We can have it anytime. I mean, we, we, we have the senior sits and lunch in there every year. Is that even a...
I'll ask about the size, I know...
Also, yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, it's a little bigger than this.
Yeah, I think that'll, that main room, I don't know if it can fit as many, but I can ask.
Well, it's about 150 at Thanksgiving time, and they've got the tables all set up for people to eat at. I mean, so, I mean, it's...
But why don't we, why don't we consider that for the next time, since Mrs. Fetty has already explored these dates with Lloyd? And she's already, she's already done the legwork on this? She's taken, taken the time to do that?
Everything she's trying to do.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
No, I think, oh, yeah, that sounded like a fantastic idea.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
So what are the dates again?
August 19th, 26th, or September 9th.
I'm out of time, all three days.
Oh.
What day of the week are those?
They're all Saturdays.
They're all Saturdays.
Yeah, those are the available. Then you start getting into, yeah, sports and, I don't know.
So August 19th falls into the summer, right?
Yeah.
The rest would be during the school year?
Um, I think August 19th would even be in the school year.
Yeah, they start early.
I think school, I know for St. Henry, it starts back in like the 13th.
Yeah.
No, it's the 16th, actually, so I'm not sure when Lloyd goes back.
I think the high schools start a little bit earlier, but yeah, a lot of schools go back around the 10th, 11th, whatever. The teachers...
They're probably all, all during school.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. He says that's not a, not an issue.
I would say pick a date.
It's Saturday, right?
It's gonna be like throwing a dart at Dartport at this point.
Yeah.
Okay. How about the 26th?
All right.
For everybody?
Enough time to plan?
If I go out of town, I go out of town.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, it was not intentional, let's skip over you there.
Yeah, I saw it on there, it was wonderful.
Okay, so we've heard the reports of our committees. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mr. Blankenship, I think I saw a hand up there.
You did.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, reports of the representatives. Are there any reports of the representatives this evening? Mrs. Kyle?
Yes, the Historical Society. The next meeting will be Wednesday, May the 10th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Depot on Crescent Avenue. The discussion will be the Erlanger Antique Roadshow, and they're inviting people to bring their family antiques and tell their family story. And then, as Ms. Skidmore said, May 13th is Train Day at the Depot Park, and that's from 1:00 to 3:00. And then on July 19th, the Historical Society will be participating in a walking tour of Covington. The number of people participating is limited, so if you want to join them, you need to contact the museum at 727-2630 to reserve a spot. So again, if you want to do the historical walking tour through Covington, you need to save a spot because it's limited. So that's 727-2630. That's it.
All right. Any other representatives? Mrs. Fetty?
Yeah, I went to the Kenton County Mayor's Group Meeting. Kim Webb, the executive director of the Emergency Shelter of Northern Kentucky, spoke about two different programs they have going on right now. Starting yesterday, they opened the doors for the Summer Transitional Program. They have 30 men that are hoping to go from homeless to housed. They provide the basic necessities to make that a reality for them. What we can do as a community, cook meals for them. You can actually, I have a number where you can call and sign up to actually cook a meal for the, for the guys. They also need items, toiletries, things to stock their shelves with, like snacks, that kind of thing. And then if you want to volunteer your time, they need volunteers. The number you can call is 859-291-4555. Then also, starting yesterday, was their Shower and Laundry Services. So that runs Monday through Friday from noon to 4:00 p.m., and it's available for men and women. Okay? So the shelter's located at 634 Scott Street in Covington, but it services Kenton County, Boone County, and Campbell County. And then it will accept as many people as it can hold. Another person that spoke at the mayor meeting was Andy Aiello. He is the general manager of Tank. He spoke about some changes that are being proposed. One of the routes that Tank is proposing to eliminate is the 19X, which is the Beech Grove Express. That runs from Beech Grove to downtown Cincinnati, making stops along Turkeyfoot at Brightleaf, Turkeyfoot at Stevenson, and Hallam at Dixie Highway. So it's our main, our main drag. It only runs on the weekdays in the morning, and then again, starting at 4:09, so it doesn't run all day long, and it doesn't run on weekends. Tank evaluates routes within our network every year through data-driven route review process. That process looks at four main criteria to identify underperforming routes. Looks at net cost per passenger trip, cost recovery, passenger trips per mile, passenger trips per hour. The routes proposed for elimination have been underperforming against the threshold in at least three out of the four of those criteria for the last three years. If you guys want, I have the data, if you're interested in looking at how that played out. So that is, the 19X is up to be completely removed.
That's a shame.
That is it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for attending the mayor's group meeting. I was unable to make that meeting because there was, I was working on all-day fundraiser for the Boy Scouts, one from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So thank you again publicly. Mrs. Skidmore?
Yes. I have a Kenton County Alliance report. The Kenton County Alliance meeting started at noon today, and it was over about 2:30. 20 people were present. The project that we're doing with Sticker Shock, it's where we sticker the liquor, is on track. Judy Bauer, one of the city volunteers, you may have seen her when you came in tonight, and myself, did 10 stores. We had a good acceptance rate, there was only one location who did not want to participate. And I think she recognized us because she said, "You guys were in here last year." The answer was no then, and it's still no. So we went ahead and left. It's, it's really, it helps the store owner to have that sticker on there, and it's nothing detrimental, it just says, "If you buy the liquor for someone underage and you get caught, you're gonna be in trouble." It's strictly like a, it's just, it's an FYI-type thing. But anyway, we did great with what we got accomplished with that. And then we talked about, some drug information was presented. Two-thirds of child abuse cases have substance abuse involved also. Some adults who have had addictive issues try to refuse drugs from their doctors for Some adults who have had addictive issues try to refuse drugs from their doctors for pain if they're, if they're like recovering addicts, and they tell the doctor they don't want any, any painkillers, the doctor insists on them having some just in case. So it just continues the vicious circle, and the doctor just doesn't want to, I guess they still make money for providing prescriptions sometimes. It's what, that's how they get their perks, I guess, I'm not really sure. That's my personal opinion, okay? And one year, one year, the number of victims, one year, number of victims lost to drugs is equivalent to all of the servicemen lost in the Vietnam War.
Battle right now.
That's how many people die of drug overdoses. Drugged parents or caregivers can cause chronic stress in children. Ninety-five percent of jailed drug addicts started out with abuse of some kind. It affects relatives, not just the abusers. Social media. We had a speaker, his name was Stephen Smith from Cincinnati Bell, who spoke about cyberbullying and the adverse effect on students. Cyberbullying, bullying lasts forever. The website is AWiredFamily.org, and then the, another one was the www dot commonsensemedia.org. Your digital tattoo, everything is tracked and you don't even know it. When in a restaurant and the Wi-Fi choices come up, some are fake, but look real. Kids are so smart these days that they know how to hide stuff from their families, but they also do not understand the ramifications of, that is, boy and girl break up, boy puts girl's naked picture on social media, stays there for several years. She applies for a scholarship, and the university finds her nude photo and threatens to take away her scholarship. I mean, that's just like a, a domino effect. Another student, when personal things were put on social media, committed suicide. When you set up an account for social media, how many of you click "Agree" all the way down the page?
Okay.
You just gave up all your rights, but at the same time, you cannot get on the site without clicking "Accept." Eighty percent of inappropriate photos find their way to other sites. Suicide rate doubled in middle school from two thousand and seven to two thousand and fourteen.
Jeez.
And then some interesting info on cell phones. The average person texts a hundred and ten times a day. The average person checks their phone every six minutes. Twenty-four percent of students ages thirteen to seventeen are online constantly, and there are even apps out there to hide apps. And Sergeant Sterling was also at that meeting, so Sergeant Sterling was very busy today. And that's, and the report.
All right, thank you. Any other reports? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the reports of City Operations. First off, we've got our City Engineer, Mr. Beaux.
Yes, sir. Uh, we are, have four active projects currently. Uh, Nelson Road Sidewalk Project has come into conclusion. All the pavement's done, restoration's almost completed. Uh, Erlanger Road and Birch are under construction, and we expect them to be completed in probably the next six weeks. And the Dixie Highway Underpass, Crescent Avenue, Erlanger Road intersection, pedestrian safety project kicked off yesterday, and, uh, hopefully, we're gonna see that change the appearance of that whole area, and also, uh, restriction of that left turn movement off of Dixie Highway to back sub traffic, uh, will be, is included in this project. Uh, as I explained before, the, uh, handicap access to bus stops will be enhanced by the people on Crescent Avenue, Erlanger Road will be able to get to the, up to Dixie Highway to Commonwealth Avenue, to the bus stop using a pedestrian-friendly route, and the pedestrians who will, that come underneath the underpass will find a, a more desirable route, uh, up to Crescent Avenue. But again, I'll point out that that's not gonna be, uh, ADA-approved because it's too steep, but the ADA, uh, can be accommodated on the opposite side of the highway, uh, up to, uh, Stevens Road and Commonwealth. So, we've accomplished a whole lot of things with that project, and I think it'll really change the appearance of that whole area. Uh, we had some ninkum hoops today, uh, when we blocked the intersection trying to work, and some of them came down Dixie Highway and decided I wanted to go there anyway, and they drove on through, and, and, uh, as I said, we, well, we can't go around the block. So, I guess we're gonna deal with that for a while. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. We've got the City Attorney, Mr. Gatlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things I want to discuss tonight. The first is at the conclusion of legislation, I would ask for us to be able to go into executive session pursuant to KRS sixty-one point eight-one-zero subsection C, discussions of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the public agency. Um, hopefully it'll be a short, short executive session. I know it's a long meeting. And Mr. Fields will lead that discussion. Um, I also want to just go over some of the legislation that is on the agenda. First, the sidewalk ordinance, that is a second reading of that, just to kind of rehash. Uh, all this ordinance is doing is repealing the requirement for the property owner to be obligated to repair the sidewalks. This is not, uh, requiring the city to necessarily embark on any sidewalk maintenance. It does not, has, this ordinance never shifted the liability of the city, who always has had the, uh, legal liability, uh, to repair and maintain those sidewalks. Um, the other pieces of legislation, I kind of go, are intuitive and have been discussed about. The final thing I want to discuss, and it's, uh, you know, it's always difficult when you're the City Attorney because you represent the city. I don't represent council, I don't represent the mayor, I represent the city, and I'm jumping into a briar patch here that is just, um, a briar patch that is unfortunate I, I have to jump into. But I do want to make a few legal comments on the municipal order that's being proposed tonight, um, that has been proposed by, uh, Councilman Blankenship. Um, and, and I first want to apologize to council and apologize to Mr. Blankenship and to Mr. Wickman. I received a copy of this municipal order, uh, late in the day Friday afternoon. I was, uh, having too much fun last week. I was in Keeneland for two days on Thursday and Friday, so, and I had a, uh, almost three-and-a-half-hour meeting in Independence last night, and also a thorny issue. Uh, so I didn't really review this municipal order until this afternoon. Um, and I, I had a brief, brief, brief conversation with Mr. Wickman and Mr. Blankenship before this meeting, and I would have preferred to, uh, have a legal memo on it, because again, I, I certainly don't want to jump into any policy issues, and I understand this is, um, a touchy subject. But I do have, and, and you guys can use this as either kindling, or you can kind of follow along with me. I have some of the law that I am going through tonight, and it's, I'm only passing this out because it's not in a memo format, and I'm gonna be rattling off some things. And I also have the advantage or disadvantage of Mr. Wickman following me with the rebuttal, because I'm guessing Mr. Wickman might not agree with everything I say tonight, so at least we have some of the statutes in front of us, and council can, can kind of do as they please. Um, first off, has everyone kind of reviewed the proposed municipal order of Mr. Blankenship? Just so we're, we're familiar with what we're talking about here. And, and I, I hate to say it's, you, you said it's your municipal order, so I'm gonna refer to it as your municipal order.
That's fine.
All right.
Credit or blame, whichever the case may be.
No. Um, first off, I just have a couple of just legal issues with it. Um, and, and, and I'll just kind of jump right through it. And I, and I think the challenge with this, and, and, and I spoke with Kentucky League of Cities and J.D. Chaney about this, this afternoon. I think the challenge is, is, is there's probably a debate as to what a meeting is, and, and whether these committee meetings that are held on the third Tuesday constitute a meeting under the KRS, and whether it is a meeting that the mayor presides at, or whether it somehow is some other creature. And, um, so I'm just gonna go through some of the, some of the issues that I have, and, and council can deal with this as they wish. Um, first off, under, under Section One and Section Two, I have absolutely no issues with, uh, the meetings being conducted in conformity with provisions of the Kentucky Open Meetings Act and the Kentucky Open Records Act, which would require the microphones, um, and recording. Absolutely, there's no legal issue with that, and it makes sense. Under Section two-point-two, again, uh, meetings, uh, conducted here, and, uh, under two-point-three, uh, the time of which the meeting is, that's already been established by an existing muni order. Um, I, I would somewhat contend that I think anytime we dictate the time of a meeting, uh, that it needs to be done by ordinance. Um, I, I think KRS eighty-three A is pretty clear on that, that that needs to be done by ordinance, but again, that's, that's an innocuous issue. I'm not, I'm not battling on that issue. The biggest issue that I see with this ordinance, and, and my biggest concern with it is, is if, if we have a meeting that is not deemed legal, um, we run the risk of invalidating things that occur at that meeting. And that's where I have concern. So if we look under Sections two-five, two-six, and two-seven, in essence, what's happening here is that, uh, that at these meetings that are on the third Tuesday of the month, uh, the mayor is not, is not to preside at the meetings, uh, or is, shall not preside over the meetings, that the mayor cannot, uh, call the meetings to order, and that the council, in fact, runs and controls the meetings. And, and I've kind of outlined where I see some of the, the statutory issues with that. Uh, first is under Section eighty-three A, point, uh, one-three-oh, Section Five, that states that the mayor may participate in council proceedings. So I don't think the mayor can be excluded from adding items to the agenda. And under Sections two-five through two-seven, again, it kind of comes down to the definition of a meeting. Under eighty-three A, one-three-oh-five, the mayor shall preside at meetings of the council. I also cited a published case, Smith versus Falk, uh, which is a little different, uh, because it was a situation where the, uh, council wanted to remove the mayor from, uh, presiding regularly scheduled council meetings. And the, and the Supreme Court had pretty strong language and said, "We agree with the Court of Appeals that the General Assembly did not intend the illogical result of permitting a city council in a mayor council form of city government to eliminate the city executive's power to preside over the meetings of the city legislative body. In particular, we are persuaded by the language of the whole statute, including the initial mandatory provision of KRS eighty-three A, that the mayor shall preside at meetings of the council." And I also have cited, under KRS sixty-one, and I understand that KRS sixty-one is not under KRS eighty-three, but KRS sixty-one is referred to in the municipal order, because it is a part of the, uh, Open Meetings Act. And the definition of meetings is actually very, very broad. And under KRS sixty-one, uh, eight-oh-five to one, the definition of meeting means all gatherings of every kind, including video teleconferences, regardless of where the meeting is held, and whether regular or special, and informational or casual gatherings held in anticipation of, or in conjunction with a regular or special meeting. So I think the issue becomes, is a committee meeting, or, or what Erlanger has referred to as committee meetings, does it meet the definition under KRS eighty-three A, which, and under KRS sixty-one, which would be virtually any meeting that the city has, or is it some other creation? And unfortunately, I cannot find any definitions or any type of meetings that are authorized by the KRS, other than regular meetings, special meetings, and emergency meetings. So it is my opinion that when council meets on the third Tuesday, as they have been doing, and has what is called a committee meeting, but in essence, it's council as a whole meeting, that in essence, it is a meeting under KRS sixty-one, and it is a meeting in which the mayor has the right to preside. So, in summary, I have absolutely no issue with city council making rules and regulations as it relates to meetings. That's clearly established law. There's absolutely no legal problem with, uh, council establishing the methodology, the procedures, and the agenda at these meetings. And there's absolutely no issue at all with council requiring these meetings to be on the mic, recorded, and that we sit in these seats. No issue at all with that. Where I think there is the opportunity for a legal challenge, and where I think that we, this, this municipal order goes too far, is taking the mayor out of presiding at the meetings. I also believe, since we are establishing things that are beyond internal operations of the city, that this should be done by ordinance and not municipal order. So again, I apologize, I did not put all that in writing. I know that's a lot at you, I just didn't have a ton of time, and it's, I, I gave you, I know, a thirty-second version, and I'm sure the lawyers to my right might not agree with me, but, uh...
Fair assumption.
I at least, uh, felt it incumbent to at least put out there what I had concerned with. Uh, I think that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gatlin. All right, next we've got the City Administrator, Mr. Fields.
Thank you.
Can you skip one?
I think you passed, I think you passed Mr. Wickman.
Excuse me.
And of all nights, Mr. Wickman.
Okay, I'm sorry. City Council Attorney, Mr. Wickman.
Thank you, sir. Well, I guess I have to respond to Mr. Gatlin's opinion, and the response is very simple. He ignores the fact that this is a meeting of committees. It's not a city council meeting. We're talking about the meetings on the third Tuesday. There is no requirement for any member of city council to be present at those meetings at all.
That's right.
So it's clearly not a meeting of the city council. The committees are, are organized and authorized by municipal orders, as I recall, and it provides that you can divide yourselves into committees, and, and you've done that. Uh, you've established the meeting night as the third Tuesday of the night of the month, and if you all want to attend those committee meetings, you can. But to simply ignore the distinction between a city council meeting and a city committee meeting is, uh, ignoring the facts. It's, it's simply a committee meeting, and there is nothing in the statutes that, um, prescribe that the mayor shall preside at city, meetings of the city committees. Uh, there's no question, those meet, those council meetings are quote "meetings." Obviously, they are meetings. The question is, are they meetings of the city council? And they clearly are not. Period. Yes, ma'am?
Um, I remember when I was first on council, uh, committee meetings were held by a particular committee, and at that time, just that committee would meet. Now, if you were interested, and I was, because I was new on council, I, I attended those meetings, but it was very unusual for the whole council to be there. And I think what happened is eventually, other council members felt like I did, they wanted to know what was going on at these committee meetings, but that's how it originally started, and that particular committee was in charge of that meeting, so...
That's true.
That's, that's how I recall it beginning. And then I think we made an ordinance that stated, "Let's have it on the third Tuesday," because a lot of council members were interested in attending those meetings. So that's how, that's the history of it. That's how it all began.
Yes, I think I...
I think that's accurate.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't a regular council meeting where, like you said, we don't have to be there if you don't want to. But most of us are very interested in what the other committees are doing, and, um...
Because we care about the city.
Yeah, and so we usually attend, yeah. That wasn't the case years ago.
I think I would, I, I would agree. You know, I, I, I wouldn't have issue if it's, you know, committees meeting on their own. That makes more sense to me. I mean, I think what we really need to pay attention to is what is the committee?
What is what, huh?
What, what is the committee? Is that, are we talking about seven committees of two people?
Yes.
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 Okay.
That's what this is about.
And it is a, a committee meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Of a quorum of council?
No, because no, because no action is taken at the committee meeting.
That's why we don't vote at those meetings usually. We can't vote at those meetings.
It is. That sounds like a duck.
I mean, that's how we used to hold them.
It is, it is a group of council members, despite what you might call it. It is, you're talking about seven committees of two people. If this was two people meeting, I would agree, the mayor absolutely should not be running that meeting. But you're talking about a quorum of council.
I have a thought.
What if it's less than a quorum of council?
If it's a two-person committee meeting, I would agree.
Less than a quorum. Quorum is six.
Are you saying that you would have less to, to deride the Open Meeting Act?
I'm saying we have a committee meeting, or maybe two committee meetings, but there is less than a quorum of council present.
With the intention of skirting the Open Meeting Act?
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's exactly what it sounds like.
I wouldn't have any, I mean, the legal issues I've brought up is because we're meeting as a, meeting as a whole is where I think there's issue. I, I do offer a proposal. I don't know if Mr. Wickman or Mr. Blankenship or the rest of council will go for this. We always could seek, um, an Attorney General's opinion of this issue.
Say again?
We could seek an Attorney General's opinion of this issue.
Is that gonna cause legal, legal fee, is that gonna...
That would delay it for a couple of years, probably, to get an answer.
Yeah.
I throw in ideas out there, but, I mean, I...
Isn't there a, an Attorney General, um, opinion on this matter?
No, there's no Attorney General opinion matter on this issue. There is the one case that I cited on this issue, but the, the issue being is Erlanger is unique in how they do committee meetings. You know, I, I don't see how we get around KRS sixty-one, eight-oh-five, which is the definition of a meeting, which would seem to include the third Tuesday.
Except for the, uh, statute you're relying on, de, dealing with the mayor presiding, is in Chapter eighty-three, not Chapter sixty-one. So, and that statute in Chapter sixty-one says it's applicable only to Chapter sixty-one, not Chapter eighty-three. Chapter eighty-three A specifically says it deals with the mayor presiding over meetings of the council. And if it was a council meeting, I would agree, he presides. But this is a committee meeting, which, and, and the council cannot take action at that committee meeting, only the committee can make a recommendation. Other council members, of course, can attend and give their input, same as any member of the public can. But, uh, that, that does not convert a committee meeting into a council meeting. I think you're, you're, it's not really a definition of the word "meeting" that's important here, it's the definition of the word "council." And that's where... And that's where I think you're missing the issue.
And which committee, which committee, which committee are you talking about?
Any of the committees organized by council.
Okay. Committees meeting.
Any of the committees organized by council.
So should we call it a committees meeting?
No, because it is a committee. Each committee meets on its own and when it's done with its business, the next committee has its meeting.
Would you feel better if we didn't come? I mean, you'd be fine with me if I didn't have to come to all these meetings.
You know, there's benefit to the, to the mid-month meeting. You know, in the discussion, you know, and it, in my opinion, it has been less of a committee meeting as it has been a caucus meeting or a work, a work meeting, you know. It's a chance for us to get together and talk and discuss things, brainstorm. I mean, that's what Mrs. Pitts had talked about early on when I took office, that, you know, that's where a lot of the work happens, is the brainstorming session that's mid-month.
That'd be right. Keep the crap off the camera.
I think that's, there's still benefit.
Hey, I, I, that's the way I feel about it.
I, I agree.
Do the bashing behind the camera.
So...
You don't agree with that. That's always been an issue with you.
Um, no, I'm saying that I do agree that, that a mid-month meeting is beneficial. I mean, I have, go ahead, Ms. Pitts.
Personally, I've been on 10 years. What we've, and I'm never one to usually say, "This is what we used to do and this is what..." because I'm fine with changes, but it's really worked well when we have committee meetings. Let's say Jessica and I wanted to bring something up and fire. And what we've done is the person that's, has the most seniority on that committee runs that particular portion of the meeting. And then if Public Works was also having something in that committee meeting, then Tom, who has seniority, would run that portion of the committee meeting. And I think lately, it seems like that's been taken away and you've kind of run the meeting and so we feel like it's just an actual council meeting instead of a committee meeting. And I think it, to me, that's what, what it is.
Okay.
If that makes any sense.
It does.
It's not like we don't want you to be there, it's just in the committee meetings, it's just, it seems to work if we run the part that we're talking about, just that person in that committee and then the next person for whatever committees we're talking about.
I'm open to...
Right. And I mean, you have the right to discuss and, and, you know, share your opinions too because we would like to hear those. And generally, what would happen is the mayor would say, "Okay, we've got the committee meeting, fire department." And he would say, "Okay, so-and-so, you take over." And he would kind of like make it move from one committee to the other. So he was more like a coordinator rather than, you know. I, I think, and I'll be real honest with you here, and I don't want to cause any trouble, but I think I was kind of surprised when we had the meeting on the floor and I wasn't asked ahead of time because usually with this big of a group, we decide, "Hey, does everybody want to do this?" Or does the majority, I think we're okay with the majority wanting to do something. We're, we're good there. And one of my biggest concerns was the videotaping of it and I think I shared with everybody some of the meetings that I had attended that weren't recorded and we had problems later with different businesses and stuff that had come in and denying what they said and, I mean, you get into all kinds of things.
Sure.
Of course, now that makes us, that makes us liable to open records, but I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either.
What we discuss at those meetings, because I called KLC just to check, to make sure I was on the right page, and they said that would make you subject to open records meetings. And I said, "Well, I'm good with that," you know.
I agree.
Which wasn't the case with the little itty-bitty committee meetings, but I don't think that format worked as well as what we're doing now. This is much better to me.
Yeah. And, you know, I knew that was a concern and I wasn't ignoring that and I have talked with Matt Allen, you know, because as you know, it's in the budget to redo the camera system and the sound system in this room this year. And, you know, that would be a big factor if we were trying to make it so that it could be recorded and, and videoed, you know, other than this table, that would change things slightly. But I hear what you're saying.
But again, I think it should be up to the majority of council.
I don't have any intention of doing that again, if that's, you know, if that's council's wish. But I do, do want to point out one thing. I mean, I know, I appreciate what you're saying about welcoming my, my opinions and discussion on it, but that's not what this says. This specifically says that nobody, nobody else talks.
I've always respected mayors in the past, too.
That is not what it says.
That, that, that's not what that says, Tyson.
It says that the agenda is...
Read 2.4, if you wouldn't mind.
It says the agenda is set by, reference made at council meeting by any, and basically you could ask for it to be put on the agenda of the city council, the committee as well. Anyone could, here could be, any member of council could ask for something to be put on the agenda, you could ask for something to be put on the agenda, staff could ask for something to be put on the agenda, as could any member of the public. This actually opens it up and that, and formalizes what we've done already. It does not shut you out of putting something on the agenda or asking it, asking for it. It would prohibit somebody, somebody simply from, at the night of the committee meeting, dumping something onto the agenda without any notice where people have no chance to think about it. But it simply says, "This is a process." It does not prevent you from speaking on it or asking for something to be included and you're misrepresenting what it says or misreading it.
Well, it just sounds so strict and stringent. "The agenda for the committee meeting shall be limited to those subjects referred to that committee by motion of the Erlanger City Council at a regular or special meeting."
Right.
So what that says is that anything that comes between now and two weeks can't be put on the agenda. It has to wait a full another month to a regular council meeting to be put onto an agenda. And that's just not good for city business.
That has never been a problem in the past. That's why we've always done it. We've referred things to council through these commit, through these council meetings, to committees through these council meetings.
Not in my time, it hasn't been like that. And it's not, it's not that I, it's not that I have created it that way.
If you wanted to add something, I think in the past, what we did was, we would have another, and like, people are gonna kill me, we'd just have another committee meeting where you would, you know, say to council, "Could we have another committee meeting on this particular item?"
When I was elected to city council, four meetings, 5,000 years ago, people keep reminding me. I, I marked out every Tuesday night.
Mm-hmm. We were told that.
We were told that from the beginning. We had a dress code, we were...
Dress code?
We had a dress code.
Yes.
Yes. No, I'm serious. I am serious. Because they wanted us to look respectful and they wanted us...